Good evening and welcome to the Glenorkie City Council's Open Workshops on the ninth of December two thousand and twenty four. I'd like to welcome all the people in our gallery today and anyone online. This is the final of a series of six open workshops that we have been trialling for the year. It was good in-person participation, but well over five hundred online views across the previous five open workshops. We are very hopeful that this useful initiative will be continuing into the same format in two thousand and twenty five. I'll start tonight's proceedings with an acknowledgement to country. We recognise the Luunina people as the original owners and continuing custodians of the land, sky and country and waters of this island, Lutritu. We pay our respects to Aboriginal elders, past and present. Glenorkie City Council commits to working in a way that welcomes and respects all Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people. This meeting is being recorded and live streamed to members of the public. Joining me here in chambers tonight is our newest alderman, Alderman Tim Marks. Not much older or longer is Alderman Peter Ridler. And we have Alderman Justin Stringer, councillor Wally Kendall, our deputy mayor, Rasmu Yaxley. I'm Sue Hickey, Mayor of Glenorkie, CEO Tony McMullin. We have Alderman Stephen King, Alderman Stuart Slade and Alderman Shane Alderton. And we have an apology for Alderman Josh Cockshutt. Now, as we like to do before we hand over to our guests, we like to bring the community up to speed and our elected officials as well with some of the activities. Last week, we were thrilled to host the launch of the Tasmanian Police, launched their latest crackdown on crime and antisocial behaviour in our region. And that was called Operation Swipe. It was very obvious, is what I like to say. Over the next four weeks, Tasmanian Police will be visible presence on the streets of Glenorkie in an effort to keep the community safe and trouble free. We want our city, particularly our CBD areas, to be places that people can use without having to think twice about their safety. We want our businesses to be able to open their doors and trade without worrying about vandalism, intimidation, racism or shoplifting. Tasmanian Police are making it clear that if you're out to break the law or harass anybody, then you're on their radar. Today, we have officially taken possession of the redeveloped Tlosa Park from Tas Water. We had a wonderful representation of elective members there. This follows the six point two million redevelopment that has seen the decommissioning of the old Tlosa Dam and the creation of an open parkland with water features, landscaping and grassed areas. In fact, there are seven and a half thousand new trees on reliable import. The council are working, continuing to work on the site to ensure that vegetation is really well established. Therefore, the fencing will remain in place until early in the new year to keep the beautiful wildlife at bay and allow work to be completed. Meanwhile, Tlosa Park Stage Two Development is one of a number of projects highlighted in the council's funding prospectus to both federal and state governments. Stage two plan includes a destination play area occasioning to all ages and abilities, barbecue shelters, drink fountains and accessible toilets, native landscaping, irrigation systems and footbridges over the wetlands and ponds, and a full-size multi-use games arena and a pump track and a partial realignment of the coterium, track and car park extension. This will be, Tlosa Park has always been a special place in pretty well everyone's in the southern hemispheres, or at least southern Tasmania, in their collective hearts because of all the memories we've all had of celebrating with our family there, and this will just make it extra special. Now, I'm going to talk about the funding prospectus. Council officers are finalising a priority projects prospectus that will include funding requests for the redevelopment of the priorities of this council. And they include eighty-five million dollars for our new pool. Tlosa Park Stage Two, which is a nine million dollar project, Humphreys Rivulet Park, which is seventeen point five million dollars, and operational funding of a youth hub, a dedicated youth hub for five hundred thousand in two thousand and twenty five and four hundred thousand recurrent funding after that. This prospectus will be used in a submission to state government's Community Consultation two thousand and twenty five, twenty six budget submission. And also will be lobbying very hard the federal government and any changes of stripes there for funding in the upcoming election process. The prospectus and state government submission will be presented to council for ratification at next week's council meeting. And finally, the roads to recovery funding. The federal government have announced over five million dollars in funding for new priority road projects, including the Renfrew Circle upgrading Woodwood and Ashbourne Grove project in West Moonee. Renfrew Circle upgrade includes installation of new curves and channels, concrete footpaths on both sides of the road and a deep lift asphalt pavement. Ashbourne Grove project features new curves and channels, concrete footpaths on both sides of the road and a deep lift asphalt pavement. Council welcomes this increase in funding as it strengthens our capacity to deliver priority road improvements across the North. Anyone who's seen the beginnings of those works will be really impressed. Christmas decorations. Last year, we heard loud and clear that our city Christmas decorations were tired and uninspiring. To encourage the spirit of Christmas, we've installed new decorations at chambers and along Main Road from Norkey and Moonee Central Business Districts. And I'm sure you'll agree that they brighten up the city and bring a bit of Christmas cheer. So that's that. Thank you. And now we'll move on to something that's very, very exciting, and we've waited a very long time for this, but we're so glad to be able to talk about the Glenorkie Sports Centre, the community course update. And I'm going to invite Pete Smith and Alex Barber to come and take a seat, please. He'll be providing us the briefing on this really important project for Clermont, at Clermont College ground.
Thank you, Mayor. And afternoon all. Delighted to be here, as the mayor indicates, to present to you a briefing on the Glenorkie Sports Precinct, Glenorkie Sports Centre, I should say, now envisaged and preferred site obviously noted on the third of November at Clermont College at the entrance to Clermont College. I think Pete's gonna drive through a couple of the slides we have in front of you this evening. We'll give some context too around the broader context and timelines around that, our engagement, our stakeholder groups that we've been dealing with. As we go forward, we acknowledge the timeframe, but it's taken at Wilkinson Point, however, that decision has now been made to move forward. And we are absolutely committed to making sure that we get this development out of the ground as quickly as possible. Pete, if you wanna drive the machine, hopefully that's working on.
So we trust that everyone has access to the presentation and we've brought unprinted copies for you if you'd like to take them away with you. So thank you for your time this afternoon, Mayor and council.
Thank you.
As we know, there is significant demand for new indoor sporting facilities right across Tasmania. In response to this, the Tasmanian Government is delivering a range of these initiatives right across the state, in particular the south of the state. As I mentioned, infrastructure Tasmania within the Department of State Growth is now responsible for delivering these key aspects of the development. This includes working with key stakeholders, including the Glenorkie City Council, user groups and Active Tasmania, as we progress a number of these initiatives. As you can see there, the new Southern Tasmania Sporting Facilities are now planned to be in three separate distinct projects. One being the gymnastics facility within the Broad municipality. As you're aware, the gymnastics jack jumpers, high performance training facility down at Kingborough. And the purpose of this conversation today is around progressing the Glenorkie Sports Precinct within the the entrance to the Clermont School. In terms of the project objectives, and I'm not gonna read through line by line these particular initiatives, but at a very high level, we are talking about a four-court, multi-user facility that meets user requirements, develops the facility within the allocated budget and the timeframes that we'll go through today to ensure that we do have value for money being developed on the site. Engage and consult, as I mentioned, to ensure there is a social licence around the acceptance of this particular project. And we are aiming to enable all the necessary approvals, and that's just not around development applications and the likes. We also go through a public works committee around these particular state-funded projects as well, with the expectation to deliver the project in the, in the fourth quarter of two thousand and twenty six for operational use. In terms of site selection, and I'll hand over to Pete to run through some of the other details associated with this, but we have been actively working with your council around pursuing a preferred site for this facility since the decision was made, as I mentioned, to relocate from Wilkinson's Point. A total of seventeen sites were investigated through a range of, I think, twenty-six criteria, really ranging from, you know, planning constraints to infrastructure constraints, land tenure and ownership opportunities as well, and making sure that the facility was able to cater for up to five thousand square metres with the associated parking that this facility will require. In addition to that, we then facilitated further due diligence around geotech investigations. One of the things we wanna make sure, particularly with all our projects at infrastructure Tasmania, is making sure we do the homework on most particular sites before we get too far down the track of the project, as we've seen in some of the other cases that may come up from time to time. To be informed and make a selected site the right decision is imperative to making sure we can progress this as quickly as we possibly can. So part of that, as you're fully aware, Clermont College came out as the highest ranked site based on those range of twenty-six criteria, followed by those geotech investigations which were undertaken on-site as well. This is backed by support from not only the Clermont College, the Clermont College Association, Department of Education, and of course, council as part of that particular process. That really formed our opinion around Clermont College as well, and as you're privy to, and the mayor was on-site as part of the announcement on the third of November. Pete, happy for you to take through the next couple of slides in terms of the site and to give people an undertaking of where things are.
For sure. So one of the things that we're very conscious of is today is a bit of an opportunity for us to share some of the rationale as to why we selected the main entry to Clermont College for this new facility. I think council are likely to agree and note many of the points of rationale in that regard. But we're talking about a site just off Clermont Link Road, which many of you would be very familiar with. And it's the flat area of land with the main part of the college up to the north, up on the rise above that hill. So we're very conscious that the site is really accessible in terms of major transport routes. It's just off the Brooker Highway, it's close to the main road, it's adjacent to a proposed new park and ride facility that the department is going to be coming to council about shortly, and of course, the inner city cycleway runs quite closely by as well. One of the things that we're also very conscious of is that the location will help to better spread the provision of important public sporting facility better across the northern suburbs. Being conscious that the Moonee Sports Centre is there, although I know it's on the other side of the border. We're conscious that Creek Road netball facility very much is a, is a key facility for this region. And so the placement in Clermont does help to balance out this style of facility across the northern suburbs. We're conscious the site is quite flat, it is vacant, it's owned by the Crown, which is a bonus to us in terms of being able to progress the development in a timely fashion, which was very much a consideration. It's available to develop and we've received support, as Alex has said, from some of our key stakeholders. It doesn't have close neighbours and given the nature of the facility, we're conscious that from the planning schemes perspective, that is a consideration. And it has a capacity also to be expanded if it's designed or if funds are available into the future. One of the sites we did look at was the Moonee Sports Centre, but of course, it's constrained, it's Benjafield Park directly behind. There's other community facilities there, so we were looking at whether we could co-locate with the existing facilities. But that capacity to deliver both four-court facility and potentially future-proof it so that it had the capacity to expand into the future was a key consideration for us. Strategically, one of the things that was also helpful is that basketball Tasmania has done some work in terms of its strategy around sporting infrastructure for it. And conveniently, part of stage one of theirs, their work, it aligns very well with their, that body of work as well. So that was very encouraging to us. So you can see in terms of the site, Clermont College is very close and I think there's a lot of alignment with, with that. The campus entry is quite distinct, directly opposite the park and ride facility with Main Road, the Brooker Highway. And as I said, the park and ride facility directly opposite on Clermont Link Road. So we have a few initial impressions and some site layouts to share with you today, but they are an itinerary. Please be mindful, it's very early days. We've started the process of consulting with the key user groups. We've got a pre-lodgment consultation process starting on this Wednesday afternoon with council officers. So we're wanting to line up our ducks really early in the process, we're wanting to make sure we're ticking as many boxes as possible in terms of talking to and ensuring alignment with the, the needs and the aspirations of many of our key stakeholders. In terms of its key features, so we're looking at developing a modern four-court facility and the emphasis being continuing on four-sport, four, four-court, multi-sport facility so that it's not specifically designed for any one sport, but it's designed to maximise the flexibility of the facility. With that in mind, we're anticipating that basketball and netball will be primary users with footsole and volleyball also being included. But we're, we're aiming to cater for pickleball and badminton particularly as well. But we're conscious that the development of the facility will enable the facility to potentially accommodate the needs of other sports and the needs of other community groups as well, given the nature of the facility. So whilst the focus is very much on the four courts, what we're keen to do is to make sure that there's a general moulding purpose space that's available, that is bookable. And of course, the facility also needs a range of other facilities, change rooms, toilets and the like. But we wanna make sure that there is an adult change facility, that there's a parenting room, that there's sensory space for those people that are sensitive to, you know, loud noises and crowds and the like, and the like, so that we're taking into account contemporary thinking in terms of sporting infrastructure. With that in mind, we're looking at having a relatively modest entry come reception place and office. And we're looking to Active Tasmania to assist us to identify the best way of operating and managing the centre and the facility. Alex and his team is responsible for developing and delivering the infrastructure. Active Tas worked very closely with us in providing technical advice around sporting group needs, but also in assisting us in terms of dealing with the issue of management and operation, given they're better equipped to deal with that aspect of the development. We're looking at making sure that the facility aligns with the walk, wheel and ride policy of the department and that very much aligns with some of the good work that Glenorkie's been doing in this space already in relation to encouraging its residents and those that visit the municipality to get out and about, to be active, to make the most of the river and to make the most of the connections, say, with the inner city cycleway. And of course, we're looking at site landscaping and other needs associated with its infrastructure. If we're able to, we're hoping that we might be able to develop at least one outdoor court and looking at how we can make sure that on weekends, there's a nice usable space outside for people to get outside, have their lunch, enjoy the sun and enjoy the atmosphere of that lovely setting. We're very conscious that we need to meet Australian international sporting codes and standards, and so we've had discussions with that. And our lead designer, Artas, is taking the lead in relation to that process. And we're also very conscious, a bit like one of our major developments, particularly in the northern suburbs of Longestown, is making sure that it's a relatively versatile space, as I was saying, for community activity to a degree. But the emphasis is very much about creating an inclusive, supportive space that doesn't have ownership over by one particular group so that people feel that they can go there. But it's also about encouraging good health and wellbeing outcomes. It's about ensuring that inclusion is a focus. And one of the things that we'll be doing in the coming weeks is talking to the Premier's Disability Advisory Council to make sure that the, the lessons that we've learned from other projects are being brought forward into this project, but that we can also draw on them in terms of any specific feedback that they would add to make sure that access and inclusion is a really strong principle that's driving the work that we're doing. So in terms of the layout, what we're anticipating with the four courts is we need to spend some time looking at what line markings are appropriate and whose needs get best serviced, because as you can imagine, if three or four different sporting groups and users are using courts, there's a limitation in the number of line markings that can be permanently on a surface. It starts to get confusing for them and the officials, let alone the, the patrons, who are very keen to sort of discover whether a ball was over a line or not. And the other thing that user groups have been very keen to reinforce is having space between and around courts and appropriate dividers between courts in a four-court facility. We've also had very specific advice from Active Tas that the current thinking is very much about making sure you align your courts next to each other. That also gives us the ability to design the building so that the public domain, as opposed to the court domain, is clearly able to be viewable. So even within the facility, we're very keen to ensure that passive surveillance is able to be guaranteed as much as possible so that there's a level of openness and you can cast your eyes around as a parent, check to see where your kids are or vice versa. So those sorts of factors in terms of philosophy and values are very important to us in terms of drivers. As it's the need to, to say, for it to design in a way that picks up on the art in public buildings initiative that is there with us Tasmania, but also minimise the risk of vandalism going forward. And we're conscious that that can be an issue. We're very keen to look at a fair and transparent process in relation to the scheduling and making sure that the operator is actually engaged very closely with the user groups to make sure that there is fair scheduling. But this is one of those issues that's not so critical as we see it to the development application, but we're noting it as something that will become part of our next steps in terms of confirming that. Now, basketball and netball are going to be the main users of this facility, we expect. We expect that Clermont College will have access during the day, during term time in particular. So some of that is fairly obvious, but what we wanna do is really reinforce the fact it is a multi-sport facility. It's designed to accommodate the needs of the broadest number of people and the broadest number of groups that we can. And one of the things that we're doing at the moment in our discussions with Artas, our architects, is making sure that the layout on the sign and the internal design gives us the capacity so that we're future-proofing, so that we've got the capacity in the future, if the funds are available, to expand the facility, but to do so at reduced cost, so that if we can do a little bit more this time round, then it will cost less into the future. You know, which is very desirable, I think, in terms of ensuring value for money, but also trying to counter some of the limitations we have with the existing facilities we see around the state. So the draft concept design that Artas has released for us gives us So the draft concept design that Artaz has released for us gives us the ability to utilise the current driveway from Claremont College, so the main entry. It does have a fairly limited sweep of a driveway with parking. We're anticipating at the moment that we would need at least fifty parking spaces under the planning scheme. But one of the things that we're keen to explore in terms of budget is whether we can increase that by, say, another twenty-five, again, as part of our future briefing for the site. So I'd say watch this space and we'll have further discussions with Emilio and the team in due course. You can see on the top of the screen, which is north-facing, that the four courts are expected to be co-located. And then most of the shared amenities will be then on the southern side of the building. And what I'm anticipating, if it's possible, is if you know where the curve is in the driveway there to the right, there's quite a nice sort of natural amphitheatre which the centre will fit into. But given that that's facing to the east and the north, I'm sort of conscious that that might be quite a nice area for people to be able to, you know, have their lunch, enjoy the ambience of the location. And there's a lovely tree line that connects down to the rivulet there at the bottom of the image. So that gives you a bit of an idea of the concept design. That is what was presented to our user group session a fortnight ago. But what we're doing at the moment is we're revising the design based on the feedback we've received and further explanation, exploration. We will then follow up our pre-application consultation with council officers and give them more of an idea of what we're taking into account. We are conscious that you can just see a dotted line to the left of the image. So there is an existing gas pipeline that serviced, I think, the TazTave Campus to the east, no, to the west of the Claremont College campus. We're planning on decommissioning that. We're conscious that there's a sewerage easement to the top of the rise that we need to take into account. And there's also a stormwater easement and a flood zone that we need to take into account. So as part of our due diligence, as part of our discussions with council, we're conscious of needing to take those factors into account so that our DA is comprehensive. And given my background with the work of the Heritage Council, supporting them for a number of years, I'm very conscious that the more ducks that we can line up and the easier we can make it an approval, with hopefully limited conditions, the better for all parties. And so that's very much our intention. So in terms of consultation, I'm conscious that we've been talking particularly with peak bodies like Basketball Tasmania, Netball Tasmania, Football and Footsole Tasmania and Volleyball Tasmania. And we've also been engaged in discussions with the Glenockie Basketball Association and the Southern Tasmania Netball Association as well. So they're the key groups that we're engaging with at the moment. We're conscious that we need to engage with the southern regional basketball clubs in addition to the Glenockie Basketball Association, because we want them to know what's happening. We want to give them the opportunity to provide feedback and input to this process if they'd like to. And so that's part of the work that we're doing. We're working on the basis that by the end of quarter one, we're wanting to have refined the design and lodged our DA, so our development application, with briefings, update and feedback as part of a general loop, particularly through that period, but it's an ongoing process. And we're using the ITAS in Stake Growth's website to make sure that there is a public facing to that. So that if you have constituents that are interested in finding out more about these or other projects that Alex is responsible for, there is a key website that's available on the Infrastructure Tasmania website. We're looking at, as I said, briefing the Premier's Disability Advisory Council in mid-January as well as part of this process. And our target then to lodge the development application for consideration by council is by the end or before the end of quarter one of twenty twenty-five, so by the end of March. In relation to the project timeframe, just where we're at at the moment is we're briefing and consulting key stakeholders on its features. We're commissioning and we've started the procurement process in relation to activating the project and also commissioning the technical reports and the studies that will be required to be lodged with the development application. So again, we're lining up those ducks. We're anticipating between quarter one twenty twenty-five and quarter two twenty twenty-five, so the middle of next calendar year, that we would have finalised the design, confirmed the operating and governance model and obtained both planning and Public Works Committee approval. So we're conscious that we have a number of processes to go through in terms of approval, but we have the budget. We're ready to start implementing and we're starting to do so with the support and assistance of council. And as Alex said, we're looking at appointing the construction contractor later this next year, commencing construction and then aiming to have it operational by the end of twenty twenty-six, which is a relatively tight timeframe, but it's very achievable, I believe. So Alex, that's a bit of a broad sweep. Is there anything that I've missed or that you'd like to add before we hand back to the mayor?
No, Pete, I think you've had a comprehensive overview. The only thing I'll add to that is around our engagement on the site. As Pete mentioned, there are a number of contour lines associated with that. So we have tweaked the layout slightly and positioning of that. And that is based on the due diligence work that they're doing and the engagement with those key stakeholder groups at this potential time, at this particular time. And in addition to that, making sure we do future-proof it so that if, for argument's sake, in ten years' time, whatever, and funds do become available, it is easy to expand that facility. You know, stormwater, sewerage, all that kind of stuff is already pre-lotted for this application. A car park in, as Pete mentioned, and it becomes a lot simpler, less constrained site if you ever, if government ever wanted to expand.
That's fantastic. Our shovel's in the ground ASAP and we'll be very happy about that subject to all approval. So thank you very much for that presentation. I'm now going to ask any of our elected officials if they'd like to ask a question and then if any members of our audience would like to ask a question. So Alderman, Shane, all to join us.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for the presentation. I think it's a great idea. I gather you're probably looking at trying to attract some sort of school sporting competition at a sporting level very similar to what they do at Creek Road. Would that be a fair estimate? Because what I noticed in the plan wasn't, the question I'm going to ask is, are you planning tour? Is there any low-level spectator-type seating or facilities that are going to be incorporated into the project? So if you do, for example, have a school-based sporting competition or even local leagues playing that maybe attract one or two hundred people or one or two hundred parents that are interested in watching their children participate in sport, will there be the capacity for people to sit around the courts and partake of watching their children play?
Very much, very much so. So there'll be a number of avenues for that. Correct me if I'm wrong, Pete, but on the right-hand side of the, of the courts there, there will be, that will potentially become a show court type scenario. So the right-hand side of that facility will cater around just over two hundred personnel. In between the courts, there is a required distance between the line markings that will also account for additional seating on the top. You know, getting in trouble probably, but somewhere between seventy and eighty people can sit in between each of those particular courts. We are investigating, subject to the budget allowance, to put a fixed seating on the left-hand side of that particular facility as well to potentially have another show court. That is part of the stakeholder feedback that closed literally only this morning. We had a very quick session on a recap of some of that information. But we are running a very similar project in the north of the state that Pete mentioned, whereby you have these central seating pods, if you will, through the middle that can cater, as I mentioned, up to seventy and eighty packs at any one time in between now. So we've just got to be also conscious though of the max capacity thresholds as well as we go through that particular process. But yes, very much catering for spectator amenity. And I mentioned that it's not really shown at this particular stage. But you know, the lobby, multi-purpose space to the lower side of the development will have viewing and additional spectators from a clear type area and that kind of thing as well. Thank you.
Good, ma'am. Just a question regarding the club connection. Obviously we've got clubs that you've had, got feedback from and obviously we've conceded in the process. What was their feedback?
Having it only closed this morning, we went out through a pretty full, look, there was a consistent theme. One of them was around how do we make clubs have their own space? Now, that is a difficult challenge, but through good design, we're able to at least make multi-user space with areas for differing sports, whether that's netball, basketball, whatever it may be. So through good design, we're starting that process. How do we integrate your specific requirements within a multi-user space? We don't want a situation where you have a room just available for ninety people or whatever it may be, a clubroom, so to speak, that's only allowed for one user. So we're trying to make it as multi-user as possible. Look, there are ideas around mezzanines and the types. We are trying to limit that. There are new ways of viewing sporting codes these days. Some of the work we're doing in that space, again, is highlighted through the work we're doing in the Mowbray. Up north about how people are able to utilise the space, not just being specific to one, one user group. But at this particular stage, everyone's seemingly comfortable as we progress through the detailed design process. Everyone will have their own storage pens, I think you probably count, I won't call them pens, chicken light. But you know, they'll be caged off of those types of sporting equipment that can be left on here as well. So that's all been coded.
The feedback essentially has been very positive, as we found out in our face-to-face workshop. In fact, one of the bits of feedback that we did get is that the sporting groups appreciated everyone being in the room at the same time. I think previously there's been a tendency for individuals to be met with individual sporting groups. And so they were very pleased to feel that it was collaborative. It reinforced the fact it's a multi-purpose, multi-sport facility. But we were conscious that things like court layouts was something that we needed to do further work on. Scheduling was something we needed to do further work on. We've had some feedback in relation to storage and we need to work through, how do we find a way of ensuring there's a level of ownership, but not at the point that excludes others? And so I think that's something that we're really conscious of, that we need to work through. We've had some very specific feedback about how we might manage that.
Yeah. So just regarding, so for instance, obviously that club connection and the ability to have a home, I guess that's something that's probably not quite in this space as such, really, is it? So that would be something that's probably going to be looked at for them to look at elsewhere. Is that, because effectively this is a moulding purpose space, is that effectively how it?
Yeah, very much so. It is a multi-purpose, multi-user space. As I said, we're not, we're not trying to give every individual club a home. I think what we've got to try and do is make sure that the use and the space made available is able to be connected on at a level where those clubs can come and feel a sense of ownership in a sense, but not doing away with multiple clubrooms, so to speak. So it is a delicate balancing act, as Pete indicates, but it's something that I think has been at least received on the other, on the other end around aspirations to that effect. And it's just working through that design, your detailed design process to make it, to make it worth for those clubs.
I do believe that there's quite a good amount of goodwill and there is recognition that it needs to be a broad-based community facility, that it's a multi-sport facility. But for instance, along the hallway space adjacent to the court, so participating glass looking out to the court. So again, there's that viewing space. But you know, there might be capacity for specific clubs or groups to have notice boards or to have display panels for trophies or memorabilia and the like. Dedicated storage facilities, whether it be cages or wheel trolleys and the like, so that their needs can be met. But again, it's about trying to ensure the right balance between ownership and being a generic facility that is open to all.
Yeah. Just one final one. And regarding in terms of, well, it's probably a bit hard netball at this stage, in terms of probably that more with the Active Tasmania, so assuming Active Tasmania will operate the facility in terms of who's actually going to be?
So we're working through the governance model, similar with a range of these facilities now coming online. This will potentially be the third one in a very short period of time. So we're going through a precedent arrangement up north in Mowbray. That's, we've had some detailed assessments done on the most practical solution for how that operates. And very much so, that is in Active Tasmania's remit around making sure this is fit for purpose or for that is government, governance arrangements. Ultimately, that the Department of State Growth is the facility owner.
Thank you. I think all of you.
Fantastic, ma'am. Look, excellent presentation. Gentlemen, look, I just want to ask a couple of questions. When I go, I go away and I, when I go away, I always do sticky beaks on assets above council. I've always done that over the last thirty years. I go to Alton North, Alton in Victoria quite a bit because my granddaughters play netball there. I'm really pleased and I've found a lot of shortfalls and a lot of good things you're saying, right. The good things they do there is something that the deputy mayor has alluded to is that how individuals are able to keep those cages or boxes or shelves. And I've actually seen it works. I really think it's really essential. Whether it be, you know, the biggest club or the smallest club, I don't mind it being a bit smaller for the smaller, a bit big for the biggest. But it's that thing of just having it up on the wall, that, look, mum and dad all in and pop, that's, that's who my club's about. So I'm putting, I'm putting a tick there, please consider that, right. The other one is too, is where they've got a big fire, is they've got no viewing in between. I'm really pleased if you've got the viewing in between. I know it may not be a lot, but at least you've got some there. And that's the big downer for me. When I look at it, I thought, wow, this is, I know it's much bigger than this to see it. But you just can't do it except in one separated place to sit. And to me, it's just, it really does frustrate the viewers. You don't get to feel the match. You're sort of taken up because you're only sort of, you're looking over the other one. So I commend you for doing that. My only question would be is if you can get the other one in, that'd be good as well, because people do love it. So I'm ticking some and not ticking some, but I've done a viewing of it and it does work. And the good thing about that one over there, it does work. The only thing that worries me a bit at it all, I know it's a much bigger complex over there at Alton North, is the car parking worries me a bit. There's only fifty out of seventy-five. Look, this is tall, which I think is going to keep on very, very well, you know. And we create a club atmosphere and a club theme, whether it be at netball or basketball. You know, you're going to need more satisfied car spots. So I just raise that, you're the people, the specialists and me and the planning people are, but I just, I'm just doing a few things in my head now. I just think it seems a very low amount, but I'll just leave it at that. You've heard my comments, I think most have been positive, but the place, things that you'll just niggled on do work. Okay.
And just to add to that, you know, I took out one of the slides in, in, in terms of the timeframe today. But as Pete alluded to, there is the facility of the park and ride, which is literally just to the south of here as well. You can't see on this particular screenshot. So there will be connectivity, making sure that pedestrians can move across those two particular elements as well. We want to make sure this is not an isolated project. This is, how do we, how do we caption that? And again, with the pathway showing there up to the college itself, how do we link all those things together? They don't just build something in the middle of nowhere, that's not.
And I must admit, they do that well in the town, the factors, the way that the buses can come in. No, people don't, people not getting killed or run over. It's a very delegated, delegated spots of the park. So all those things, having seen them, they work. And I know you take this on board, but I'm just saying, I just, I just allude to, to the exhibit on park. Apart from that, I think the model is great. What happens to, is the tafe gone, did you say? I just, you say the?
If I could pick up on a couple of points, firstly, the presence of the park and ride to the south side of Claremont Link Road will be very helpful, especially after hours and on weekends. Because that, you know, that's not the time that that facility is designed to meet the needs of those that are commuting to work and to education. So that will supplement this, I believe. And so that's actually quite a good outcome in terms of maximising the parking that's available. Having said that, walk wheel and ride policy of the department is also about encouraging people to get to and from venues in different ways that contribute to wellbeing and health outcomes as well. The other thing is that the latest version of our current concept design also anticipates, which you can't quite see here, a separate bus pickup and drop-off zone and a separate one for vehicles as well. Because we're really conscious that those sorts of safety mechanisms are really, really important. As is preserving the pathway, as Alex said, to Claremont College. So from a walk wheel and ride perspective, you're continuing to maintain accessibility to the college because we don't want to plonk this in the middle. And in fact, our planning has moved, meant that the building at the moment is envisaged as being further to the. Um, and in fact, our planning has moved, meant that the, the building at the moment is envisaged as being further to the west. Um, A to avoid a stormwater, but B to ensure that there's still a strong sense of entry to the college. In relation to the Taz Tafe campus, my understanding is that a new facility has been developed. So that that has been vacated. And I believe, although I can't speak for the Education Department or the Department of Education, Children and Young People, but I understand Clermont College is thinking about how that portion of the site might be better used. But that's where we've had discussions with them about the notion of capping and decommissioning the poorly gassed pipeline that used to service that.
Thanks for letting me. I hadn't heard that, that's all. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. I think it was Peter Riddler first and then Tim. Thank you.
Thanks, man. Through you, um, bottom slide, slide stop, something there, but I agree, parking is a major issue. Um, fifty and I appreciate there's other surrounding areas for pedestrians to walk. However, um, the good example is how about the cortex of it, just not complex. Uh, this will need more than fifty plus the expansion to seventy-five, even if you have ancillary parking elsewhere. Uh, and bottom slide also mentioned about buses. Obviously, we're going to have some significantly larger, uh, heavier, rigid type of buses that may bring dedicated visitors from all over high grade highway and one line and, and move, come in and move off. We just can't see at the moment where you're going to get a walkout process there. So I, I know the minimum, I think you said the minimum requirement from the planning was fifty. Sounds like it needs to be probably somewhere close to two hundred and just take two teams, um, coaches and support staff. There's fifty spots probably touched straight away, taken before any public get in there. And as, as you know, only two people per car from the car. So we've got the same problem. We've got more cars than people, and we've got to encourage people to use our force transfer to get there.
Sure. And so one of the things we're conscious of is that there has been some work done in relation to the Park and Ride around traffic management. So traffic management plans and the like need to be submitted with both of those development applications. So we're conscious of the work that's being done in that regard. We've started to do some preliminary work because we're conscious of trying to get an idea of movements in and out of the Clermont College site before the end of term. I'm not so sure that we're quite able to do it quick enough. I think we hit the exam period, which as we know, you know, doesn't necessarily represent the rest of the time, but we're very conscious of those sorts of things. And we'll be looking to our experts to provide advice in relation to those matters. But again, it is a combined response, which is about parking for, for vehicles. It's about buses. It's about walk, wheel and ride and maximize the opportunities of that environment in which it sits.
I hate to say it, it's like, now we're named, but you've got the situation where, um, there's not enough car parks in this round and I hope the council put tickets on people because they're parking illegally, nature strips, et cetera. And on other commercial properties, we've got a major hotel there, small car park. I could see we could get some issues unless we cater for a larger number of visitors in the centre, particularly if there's more than one team play or teams, but a more than one courtroom is the ones.
Very valid feedback.
Yeah. We'll, we'll take that on and as Pete alludes to, the consultants looking at that will obviously set what the benchmark is and how we choose to, and figure it out on your comments, exceed that, uh, and make it sure it is robust for those types of the cars. He's taking into account all the other elements running into that as well, but have a look at any more details as the, the plans are reformed.
Yeah, and even on the other side of the, uh, the top of the work, the other one, the front stand is a bypass and a crook up. You've got Abbey Field there with car park, et cetera, and have a park next door. I'd say that that's been used, even though people will walk towards three hundred metres, that's what's going to happen unless we cater for car park.
Okay, Alderman Mark?
Yeah, thank you for your, Mia. I'd just like to inquire whether you've been in touch with disability sports and disability access consultants other than the Premier's Disability Committee?
Uh, so not as yet that I'm aware of. However, uh, what I would say to that is we deal with Paraquad, um, Tasmania. Um, we also do get on occasions consultants in around that. One of the learnings that we have done across all our projects is get feedback in as early as possible. Uh, for argument's sake, uh, we have a changing places facility, uh, being implemented in all our two major projects in the north of the state. That'd be New Test Stadium and the Hub project. There are additional grants associated with that for argument's sake, the Hub alone, we got a, an additional seventy-eight thousand on top of uh, the existing government contributions around that. Uh, very much, I'll be doing the exact same thing here and making sure that occurs. Uh, in addition to that, we've also gone through a process particularly around disability access car parks. Um, there are, um, some of the learnings we've found that we've implemented is around not having wheel stops and those kind of initiatives, making sure the car parking areas exceed, um, the Australian standards. Um, so there's a hell of a lot of learnings that have been done on all those. Um, not putting in lifts, not putting in double story, you know, um, all those kind of things. We might have that particular challenge here, making sure corridors are wider, um, making sure there are, um, hearing loops, uh, put into the facility, um, and sensory rooms and those kind of things are all being taken into account when we do any of our new buildings. And that's something, um, that has been championed. And we have had recent feedback from the Premier's Disability Advisory Council, um, that they love to get involved and focus on the mission because we're actually listening, uh, and making sure we implement them up prime. It's not a matter of, um, that's a cost-saving idea. We're putting in, uh, in any of our new builds that, uh, fall across my desk in any case.
Thank you very much for that. If you do need any IMXD disability access consultants, so.
Wonderful. There we go. Well, we'll get you on board and we'll talk you all the way through. Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions from the floor? I, I've just got a quick one. Where does the outdoor court go?
Uh, potentially because it's not orientated right, uh, Pete, uh, we could either put it at the right-hand side or the left, depending on where we look to future proof and expand it. So we are looking to potentially cater up to potentially six courts in the future model. Um, if we did that, it's likely that they would go the left-hand side. So therefore, by shoveling this across a little bit to the left of screen, um, it could open up a court in front of the, um, the car park in there to the right or just to the right where the, where the pathway goes up. But, um, yeah, we'll, we'll go through that detailed design process.
Thank you. Now, do we have any questions from our audience? Thank you. Do you like, uh, name and suburb, please?
Name and what's on it?
Suburb.
Oh. Um, you knew that anyway.
I, I do, but this is for the recording.
Off, off the top of my head, that's a very technical question.
But it's a very important one because you cannot have basketballs going across all courts if they're all playing once.
No, so. Yeah, so, um, we'll take the exact measurements on, on notice because that's, that's a conceptual design. But one of the elements is, um, there are curtains that come down during activities. So there is no need for balls to be flying across the mall. So you could be playing netball on one court, basketball on the other, foots on on the other, whatever on the other, um, and.
What about noise?
So nowhere.
If you've got four games going in one, at any one time, even the curtains, you're going to have more noise if you haven't got that lost. Something to, um, absorb the sound.
So there's, there's acoustic treatment in the actual, uh, facility itself, but in terms of, um, how that's treated across the court. It's very similar to anywhere else at the moment. There's not a wall you can do unless you put physical hard barriers, but that then loses.
That's not many of the ones down here. They've got multiple things like that because they've got, they've been added on and they've got individual balls, which makes it safer for the people who are playing, who could end up, I don't know why that gap is in between the two, each court. If you've got people sitting there, there's nowhere for the players to go except into that for those people if they're going for that. And the balls are the same.
So everything's designed to the Australian standards in the accordance of those, um.
Which, how much room would there be in between the courts?
Oh, oh, it, it's some metres. We're conscious that I think for volleyball and basketball, particularly runoff is an issue. Um, that floor area is being designed so that movable seating, like the, the seating you're sitting on this afternoon, can be used. And if it's not safe to be used, then it wouldn't be. Um, but what we're very conscious of is the, the, the netting or the cur, it, it's going to be more netting. But there's been some feedback that we've received about what the treatment is in the lower metre or two. Because one of the aims of this, as I was saying earlier, is about making sure that there's good clear access and the ability of people to be able to see across the area. But we're also taking advice from each of the, the peak bodies and also the local users around those sorts of matters. And we'll continue to refine that because some of those questions are not so critical to the management of the development application, which is our current, um, focus. I regard some of that as more associated with the fit out. So things like scoreboards, the use of electronics, um, as I said, the court layout, um, how the courts actually work is some of the detail that we come, um, because once we know that we've got a certain footprint and envelope to work in, we can refine that detail in conjunction with the users.
Yeah. And the other one, just looking at those plans, they've seen the, the runoff, um, to the, the physical lines, um, are the inside lines. Then you've got the runoff boundary around that, which off the top of my head might be somewhere in the range of two point three metres wide, those runoff components before you get into the, so you've got two point three plus two point three plus the, the middle ground there, which would be possibly somewhere in the range of four metres, but we can take that personally with that exactly as well.
Why can't that be parked in front of the town? Let's say, and on another level, it's going to go up. It's the light frame, the road, the driveways, why can't that be parked?
We, oh, between the road and the.
The building. Why can't that be parked?
Um, we can certainly look at that, but off the top of my head, I think there are some flood requirements that are shattered in there.
Right. Just start going up, if you were just asking about that, how much are you going to get?
Um, so. Yeah. So again, um, that's, that's a, that's a concept design. So to get moved along and trying to create, um, the contours slices of, uh, some upright hand corner comes lower down into the, away from the concrete.
So our current work at the moment, we've actually shifted it more to the west. Um, because we're very conscious of the building needing to avoid flood plain, but it also needs to avoid a stormwater. So the council and Taswater can continue to have access to those sorts of elements. So this is just first, um, go, if you like, in the concept design. So at least we have something to talk to user groups about. We've been taking feedback on board. We haven't had the ability to digest the, the feedback flows this morning, as Alex said, um, and so there's sorts of factors that we're taking into account. What we, what we needed to do by doing this exercise was to make sure that a building of about five thousand square metres would fit on the site. Hopefully on the flat part of the site, um, that it would also accommodate at least those fifty parking spots that are required under the planning scheme. So this is about trying to prove that it all fits. It's not the final design, um, and it's not what we officially presented to council.
And just to, just to clarify, I had quickly had a look at the, between the courts is roughly five point three five metres. And then you've got two metres of runoff on each side, so almost ten metres. Uh, quite a significant amount of space. And that's been designed to cater for those, those kind of elements.
Uh, any, any other questions from the floor?
Yes, thank you, Eddie.
I'm Eddie Speen, I live in Rosetta. I'm actually more interested in what's outside. Can you, can I just get something clear to start with? This facility is going to run bad all year round?
Uh, yes, I would imagine so. Maybe not Christmas start, I think, yep.
Yeah, but the.
Yep, yep.
Working days and I suspect it's going to run from nine till nine till midnight.
Uh, that's part of, that's part of the DA process.
The sort of courts you're talking about.
Yeah, nor- normally on a few other projects that run from anywhere from seven to eighteen, I think there's some of the, but depending on now how we treat the noise mitigation, um, that's what informs the hours of operations, part of the planning application.
Okay, that takes me to another point, which is, this whole design is all about people driving there. Well, while you've mentioned the walk and the ride, et cetera, this whole design is really about people driving there. If you don't drive there, it seems to me this is not a good place to walk to. Now, Park and Ride is over the other side of Link Road, so that's, that, that's not exactly close. The bike track, which is where people might ride, is, is far away and you haven't talked about any sort of linkages with, with the cycleway. And I, I imagine night time, this is going to be, this is going to be a place that you will, you will drive to. No one will go any other way. So I'm, I'm just, I don't see how you'd actually thought about people not going to drive.
I suppose one of the comments I'd make about Park and Ride is that, and I don't want to, I suppose preempt to develop an application that's coming your way. But my understanding is that Park and Ride is, is expected to have, um, I wouldn't say pedestrian crossings, but I think there's a pedestrian island both to the east and the west of the main entry driveway. Um, so the expectation is that there is a safer way of pedestrians crossing there. The Park and Ride explicitly, um, is designed to link into the intercity cycleway. So that there are pathways between, what we need to do as part of our design is work out, or works in with Clermont College and our current budget in terms of how those pathways link. Um, because at the moment, I don't think there, there is no formal pathway. There is a gravel pathway that runs up the hill. Um, and there's a gravel pathway that goes through not quite a turnstile, but, um, a traffic calming sort of mechanism near the boom gate. So that people can't speed through there, um, and the like. So we're taking those things into account. One of the things that we're conscious of is that vehicles will be used. You know, there's no doubt about that. The planning scheme anticipates that by requiring us to have at least fifty parking spots there or vicinity of that. Um, one of the benefits of this site though, is it does give good separation. Because fifty metres is a critical distance under the planning scheme in terms of separation from, from residences. There is actually quite a good natural camping area there, which means that the, the premises that I'm more familiar with, like Clermont House and the, the houses up on the top of the ridge are well sheltered from, from noise and from light, et cetera. And, um, the suburban area that's across the road from Clermont Link Road is also well removed. So I mean, that gives me some comfort, given some of the other sides, um, that, um, council officers, myself and active Tasmania assessed. We were very conscious of avoiding local roads, avoiding scenarios where there were headlights at eleven o'clock at night and slamming of car doors, which I'm sure you get lots of complaints about for some of the council facilities you have. And trying to take that into account. And that's where this site kicked many boxes around being well located, but also minimizing the risks that might otherwise arise that could create concern for people. So, you know, we're not going to tick every box in that sense, but we're trying damn hard to make sure that we're meeting something that's meeting people's needs, that fits the local community and is very much perceived as an asset, rather than, um, something that detracts from, um, you know, that lovely part of Clermont.
I absolutely get them. I understand. I can see the attitude gone to the recently chosen site. It's just that when you say it has separation, another way of saying that's saying is isolated. So literally to walk into that site, you literally have to walk past the line of trees. So what I'm saying is you really want to walk at night, you want, you want the safety. You want to walk the lights. You want people to walk from the Park and Ride to that facility feeling safe.
And, and in the same way, the internal layout is designed to allow for passive surveillance. Um, I've been doing some work, for instance, in locating the proposed gymnastics, gymnastics facility in Brighton. You know, passive surveillance is really important. My background actually is in disability as a social worker, um, many years ago though. Um, but it is one of those things that we're very conscious of those other social elements that mean it's an area that works well. Clermont Relink Road is a very busy, um, part of the community. So that gives good rise to passive surveillance, which is a real tick in, in that regard. But it's also about making sure that, you know, the, the, the lighting and the features that go with the future Park and Ride will augment this as well. So there'll be more people around, there'll be lighting around. Um, the roadways will be better designed for pedestrians than they are now. So again, it ticks a number of boxes in that regard. I'll be conscious of the sorts of points you're raising. So thank you for highlighting them.
Okay. So if you can give me a right to that and that and road because if you're going to ride in the bike. It's always pretty strict that when it goes up to the big.
The driveway? Um, I can't comment off the top of my head, but the highest sport we need to allow for is volleyball. And I had the feeling it's between twenty and thirty metres high, but I might.
No. Uh, no, sorry. No, I'm moving clear.
Oh, there you go. Sorry, it's a pretty big.
Uh, no, it's a, the law.
It's on the flat. Sorry.
Understand, you know, that's almost like for us. Uh, schools up the hill, we can't really do it. Um, nothing. Um, nah, we're on the flat side.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. I had to draw this to a close. We've got another section of the workshop. I really appreciate Alex and Pete coming along to brief us. And sooner the better.
Thank you.
So the next section of our open workshop is a discussion around the community budgets. And going to have Curly Crawford, Natasha Barber, and Christine Lane to back up, and Andrew Mike. So, take it away.
Sorry. So. This is on the. Yeah, this is what you're gonna do in two hours.
Yeah, that's what we're doing, George.
Is it? This is it? This is, do you remember? Uh, it's, yeah, is it?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we didn't have that presentation yet.
Nah, we didn't have that.
Oh, just sort of flash, yeah.
Thanks.
And seven, you did.
Nah, I didn't have that.
Thank you, sorry. Hi. So I'm Curly, I'm the community engagement officer, I think I've met most of you, but I've been doing a little bit of work on this project whilst on maternity leave. So if I have a little baby rain moment, please read me. So this survey is a survey that we do, the council conducts each year for the community to have their say on the budget priorities. So this survey will be in relation to the twelve months from the thirtieth of June next year. Updates are made each year to the wording and presentation of questions slightly, but we keep the, perhaps the exact same each year for consistency. Because this will be the fourth time that we've done this survey. So, as I said, there's a survey which is accessible online on our consultation page on Nets Talk Sanofi and also available as a hard copy. The other aspects of the consultation, we have two quick polls and an ideas board. These are tools that we use on our consultation page. They are, you don't need to register for those ones, so we do request registration, require registration for the survey, but offer a couple of other options with the key questions for people who don't wish to register. Then we also have our face-to-face feedback, which has been really creative this year as a way of accessing our younger community, so that, that happens as well. And the hard copy survey, like I said, that's been available at customer service, Men Art Centre, Jobs Hub, and the childcare centres and places like that. And just touching on the face-to-face, so the elected members, as you would know, ask some of these questions, particularly our one wish question, which I'll go into in a minute, at pop-ups and yarns. And Natasha has also asked this question to a really broad range of people at all of our engagement activities, our face-to-face engagement activities throughout the year. So this future direction survey for this year was opened from the sixteenth of October to the twenty fourth of November. We had eighty-four responses to the survey, a hundred and thirty-six quick polls, and one ideas board submission. And there's some info in the report on who responded. But just to go over that briefly, so ninety-four percent of the people who took part were rate payers, that's up, up a fair bit this year compared to last year. And the other key sort of info there is twenty-seven percent were born in Australia, so that probably doesn't quite match our community, so we probably need to work on improving that just a little bit, that stat, in future years. We are on par, though, with people who, when you compare who responded to the consultation, who seven percent identify as living with a disability, and we get this information by requesting, by requiring registration for these surveys so that we can ensure we're hearing from all of our communities. And that, when we compare that to latest census results, is the same figure, so that's, that's a good stat there. Age, we probably don't have as many younger people as we do have in the community, but like I said, Natasha has done a great job of going to the places where we can get more creative feedback from them. And also, the survey stats here don't include some of those in person, so there'd be a lot more young people than what's actually represented in that figure there that we have heard from. And what we heard, so these were the three highest ranked service areas. So of the hundred and sixty-nine responses that we received across all the formats, a hundred and two were related to asset maintenance, ninety-nine were in relation to recreation and public open spaces, and eighty-five related to environmental management. And just to go into that in a little bit more detail, all of these service areas were pretty similar in order when I compared to last year and the year before, survey results, apart from economic development, that has come up a fair way, but apart from that, asset, asset maintenance, rec and public open spaces, and environmental management, waste management, and community development are all higher in the similar order. So, looking at the comments we received with further, with this question, so the, the asset man, asset, asset maintenance and the recreation and public open spaces were quite linked, so people would leave comments. And that, those sort of service areas are quite linked in people's minds when they're thinking about the budget priorities for council. And environmental management and waste management are similar. And one thing from this year's survey that stood out compared to previous years is safety, so that has, there's been a lot of comments about safety and pride, which I'll have a bit more detail in when we get to the one wish question. But yes, a lot of, a lot of comments around people wanting to feel safer, and they are obviously quite related to community, if we're allocating them to service areas. That fits within community development and wellbeing for the purposes of this survey. A little bit of detail just quickly on the top three. So the asset maintenance frequent mentions are made of improving cycling and pedestrian infrastructure, transport and the pool, environmental management, waste management, and recreation and open spaces. A lot of comments around wanting a clean and green city through better conservation of parks and coastline cleanup, and things like that, tree-lined streets and accessible parklands. Enhancing recycling infrastructure and sustainability were, yeah, very popular suggestions. And for community development and wellbeing, yeah, like I said, concerns about safety, crime, youth behaviour and safety in public areas were, was very prominent in the comments. And wanting a diverse, inclusive community that supports all residents and particularly the vulnerable communities. And so now moving on to the one wish, so what would be your one wish for the future of Sanofi? This is a free text question, so people could provide any sort of response to this one. We received a hundred and thirty-seven responses via the survey and the quick poll, so this features the, this is a combined data for those two formats. And again, they've been categorized into council and service areas. And safety and pride is added here, that's not a service area, but if there are common themes, I'll add them in so you can see them as a visual representation compared to the rest of the information. Yeah, and that was again added because of the number of comments around safety and pride as well, so people want to see, they want to be able to be proud of the city, and they want to see other people taking pride as well. And other was there, just the, for comments not related to any of our service areas, just to represent that information as well. And so the key themes from this one wish question, as you see there, so community safety, crime, more diverse, environmental sustainability and infrastructure improvements. And now the, this section is about the capital works questions. So respondents were asked, which of the following capital works do you think are most important for council to fund in the twenty-five to twenty-six budget? And the follow-up question to that were, are there any other capital works projects that are important to you? So that supports the data in that previous question. We had forty-nine responses to this one, and the top priorities identified from respondents were the pool redevelopment, better foot paths, recreational paths, bus shelters and facilities for people with disabilities, expanding green spaces, maintaining waterways, and developing new recreational facilities. And a common comment from not just this year, but last year as well and the previous as well was zinc link, the zinc rail corridor, that is quite a consistent comment that comes up for people wanting development in that area. And the last little section is on, how happy are you with the current standard of the following council assets? And this is a scale question, so you could answer on a scale of fairly happy to extremely unhappy. And all of them are pretty similar in that most respondents are fairly happy with those council asset areas.
Is that really quick, I'm like that thing?
Thank you. I've got a question for you on page ten of the paperwork. You haven't presented it in the pie graph like you have there. And it concerns me that graphically, you know, it looks nice, but it's distorted because of the graph sizing, so.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, you've got on the top one, the scale goes between forty and forty-five, but down on the third one, it goes from thirty-five to forty, and yet they look like they're all even.
Oh, yes, sorry, okay, on page ten.
So they would have been better as a pie graph.
Yeah, I think that is in the report. Oh, no, they've got the report there.
Yeah, I've got the report, and so the grading of it is out of whack, so not lining up like that. Yeah, now, do we have any questions from the floor, Alderman Slade?
Look, I'm sorry, I found this very complicated survey results to read. Complicated or didn't cross over right? I just, I, I just felt with the amount of people participating that we should, we've got to clarify a bit clearer. I would have liked to seen, in the service area funding priorities, the figures just underneath there where we've got the lines for the previous year, that's all. That would have, I just think previous year to now would have been helpful. I really, really got confused with, it had to be the framing. The one wish thing, right? The one wish is art and cultural development is right at the bottom. Yet, on that thing up there, the capital works there comes up quite high. And we're doing mayor, I really wonder whether or not, you know, we should perhaps sometimes look at that community plan and wonder whether or not they should go through the shredder and re, re-be-dung as well, because I was very active in that community plan and, and the community hearts, whatever, was in the ninety percent. So I'm having great difficulty as trying to read this to, I know that the community plan's not a document that we need it, it's not a legal requirement to have that. But I'm just wondering what the hell we're going to do with that, so that's probably another time for you, mayor. But I just want to work out how this one wish balances, that this is one example with that up there, well, doesn't seem to balance to me. And I just find the amount of people that participated, are we putting too much weight on some responses? Because to me, it's, it's a, it's a small feedback, I'll, I'll just leave it there, but I, I'm, I'm not, I'm not surprised with sa, with safety and pride coming through. But none of this here, no, no, nothing else in here in this, in the survey, and thank you for presenting it so well today, has really given me much to get excited about, gives, gives me sort of a catalyst to want to raise something a bit more. I'm very biggy mouse about the first moment, so I'm sorry.
I, I think we've discussed this each time this has come up, like, in fairness to the officers. I mean, I don't know how, we were having this conversation today, just how many you put on community yarns and five people turn up, you know, you put out, every day you're putting out bulletins on the social media, we're putting out posters, we've got people going out asking questions, invite people all the time to give us feedback. And when you go out with a, a survey like this, I, I think the responses are less than our total number of our employees.
Yeah.
So sometimes you wonder if you just didn't stand at the bus wall with a scribble pad, could you not get more answers? But I don't think it's part of the staff, and I think this is, if anything is giving us a vibe, I certainly wouldn't be saying that we make any decisions, oh, it's not statistically valid in any way, but it's interesting some of the answers people are saying, and I agree with you. I think that community plan, the city of the arts nonsense, it's so out of date.
I'd say one more, mayor. Look, I commend the work you do, I'm not having any problems with that, because it's very hard, because you haven't got enough participants. But I made the comment before the council meeting to the good manager there in your area that I've never been so impressed in the last three community events in the last two weeks this council's run. I felt really, I felt a real valued member as elected member around this, this table. I feel like a very united council with phenomenal staff support there for those three events we had, which was, you might have propped here, we had one for, obviously for the trial for the off-shops, we had it for Police Safety One, and also we had it for Zellon Mayor, the third one, the.
Sixty birthday or Red Beach?
Red Beach, now, they were, they absolutely encapsulated the community. And to me, I, I drew more strength from those, I'm saying this nicely, than some of this, some of this in here. Because I really got the feedback, what the community wanted from that. So I suppose what I'm saying is, I don't know how you guys can put that together then, that feeling we had there, but it's not here, that's what I'm saying, that's all. I know it's hard, it is hard, I respect you do, you do a good job, but I was just trying to work at how we can perhaps encapsulate that, that, that feeling of the community a bit more, because they were three great events.
Yeah, so definitely understand your feedback there. This is presented, I guess, in a very encapsulated way.
Yeah.
To give the big picture on service areas for you all to take into consideration and other things. And the one wish question can be asked at all, all sorts of those events, and like I say, you do get a real feel of the community at those events, yeah. And you might feel, the full report with all redacted comments will be provided, and you'll probably feel a little bit more excited when you see that.
Oh, wow.
The comments and ideas and, and suggestions and thought that people have put into their responses, that is there.
That sounds good.
Just hard to emulate that in a graph.
That's all right, yeah.
Thank you, Alderman Austin.
Thank you, mayor.
So last year, I applaud you guys for the great work you did in getting three hundred and seventy-seven who would have contributed to last year's survey. This year, I just find it a little bit, and, and this is no reflection on your work, because you guys do a fantastic job. I just found it a bit concerning that we only got two hundred and twenty-one contributions. So I'm wondering, have we changed anything from last year to this year to end up having a forty percent reduction in participation, which obviously probably gives us a different set of figures and not a, 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 as good a, a, a view into the situation of what concerns our rate payers? So that, that made me very curious if we've had a forty percent drop off in contributions, so I was just wondering, have you tweaked things differently this year or done things differently to, to the previous year to contribute in any some way?
We do tweak the language, but don't change the questions, it's more just to make it as clear as possible.
We do tweak the language, but don't change the questions, it's more just to make it as clear as possible and incorporate feedback each year that we do receive on the actual um format of questions and things. Um but last year there was a very um hot topic of the pool.
True, correct.
People were printing, we had great engagement from people coming, they wanted me to print them hundreds of surveys and they were taking them out for us. We didn't have that this year.
Yeah.
No one was coming to ask me for printed copies.
Do you feel we need, do you feel we need to create a hot topping area?
It's on par with the previous year.
Yeah, well, you you did, you did exceptionally well in lifting it from ninety-six in twenty twenty-two, twenty-three to twenty-three, twenty-four, three hundred and seventy-seven, so I I take my hat off to you guys in achieving that.
We'll get there.
But I just found it equally as interesting as how the numbers are dropped off just as quickly.
Through you, mayor. Um I think some of the comments have been really good around the table. It's hard, this is in s- in a certain sense, this is a a business as usual um survey, so it's, it's not like, it's not quite as attractive as a an issue-specific survey, it's something, it's it's saying more, what overall um do you think we should be prioritising? And so it it is difficult, it's a difficult topic to engage with people on. A- and we we acknowledge that it is an indicative uh level of feedback, but um which, non- nonetheless, we think it's a really important piece of work that we do each year to 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 give us um the best foundation we can to underpin the budget priority process. So um I think uh it's really important that we do this work. Um yes, in an ideal world, we'd love to hear from all fifty thousand odd um citizens in our city, but the reality is people live busy lives. Um probably the the Glenocky City Council is the, uh down the low, down towards the bottom of their priority list in terms of just um earning money, getting their kids to school, et cetera, et cetera. So we 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 accept that it's not all about us, but nevertheless, we think this is a really important and foundational piece of work that's done each year to to give us at least a level of confidence going into the budget process about what the community is seeing as important. As Curie Lee says, um the full report will provide a bit more colour and movement around um around some of those um trends. Um.
Another question, sorry. Do you think there's any value in taking a four-year window out of all this data and averaging it out over four years of CEO? Will we get any value out of that?
Through you, mayor, I think certainly there's some be- benefit in um looking at what it might have changed uh some sort of year-on-year analysis. Um in terms of you you, what you're talking about is is kind of adding the surveys together.
Yeah, and and averaging it out, yeah, yeah.
Um I'd take, probably take advice from Curie Lee and the team on that one, but um yeah, we're certainly happy to look at any, I I guess it's the, it's the trends that are interesting in terms of what has, what has changed from from previous years is would be, you know, would be useful for us. Um the other thing that came up during the discussion was around the community plan. I think it's fair to say that is, you know, the the community plan was always going to be a twenty-five-year plan. It is non-statutory, it's now ten years into its life. So it is something that we, we as a council need to give some thought to in terms of um a review. Uh so I I certainly wouldn't say um we throw the baby out with the bathwater because it has a high priority for arts and culture. We know that um Mona was newly opened in flavour of the month when it first when that piece of work was done. Um but I I think there's still a lot of, it was so deeply um engaged at the time, that I still think there's uh a lot of authority out of it. Um but yes, it's, you know, we're talking ten years, you know, coming up to ten years on, and it's potentially time for us to be considering what our next major piece of work is around that.
Okay, and the meeting?
Thank you, mayor. Um it's uh, since we've been discussed, you know, it's it is a survey, it's about our future direction. I think the most important part is that um your team and you provide the opportunity, um you're there at the yarns or in what I you know, you allow people to give an opportunity or think about an idea or a future of things, so I lo- I I applaud you in in that, and it really is for me a high-level snapshot of potentially where we should be going. Um and so I think it's delivered what we we do. We'd love, again, we'd love to get us people to tell us exactly what they want. Um but we take, we take that snapshot and we add it to the, to the mix of top and all, so I think it's great. Thanks.
Yes, anyone else want to add anything? Thank you, councillor Kendall.
Thank you, through you, mayor. Thank you so much for this um feedback from the community survey. It's one of the funnest times of the year for um elected members. And I think you've already answered my first question, which is where we get to see people's One Wish, so it sounds like that's coming in the full report, which is great. Um to me, these top priorities really reflect topical issues in terms of safety and pride, I think that we're actively dealing with at the moment and quite proactively as a council, so I'm really happy to see that. And also these three uh top hitters, asset maintenance with us um really focusing on our renewals of the council, but also repair of the pool. We've got lots of um new playgrounds that have opened up, and I think that's why we've got the, you know, good marks for the playground area, which makes sense. And um yeah, and I think it's a great, it's a great push from the community to keep investing and invest further in environmental management, so I'm really happy to see this report. I think it's confirming of where we're putting effort in as a council at the moment, which is, yeah, really comforting and reassuring. This is a tiny little um point, but I'm just curious every time I read this feedback, as when people are um filling out the survey for comms and engagement, like we're asking them, do you want us to spend money on comms and engagement? What do you think they think we're asking with that? I was just wondering what I would think if I was doing the survey. What does that mean?
Yeah, that that uh each uh service area has this um heading and then a couple of examples of the types of things. So there are a couple of prompts there for um to the, to respond to, so pop-ups, yarns, um and uh our communications methods, I think are top ones. There, but you're right, people probably do think of uh different things, and that's, I guess, the difficult the difficulty we have with the amount of service areas that we're presenting and trying to be clear with what each of them, because council does so much, so. Um yeah, but we can always keep, like we've added the images this year, so that's the kind of stuff that we like to refine to make it as easy as possible. And then the face-to-face is obviously easier to have a conversation with them about what they are, yeah, yeah.
That's great to hear that there are prompts, thanks, through you, mayor. Yeah, because I'd hate for people to think it was like self-promotion for the council and they don't want to see us investing in that, but comms you know, really important part of things like this, community engagement, so yeah, thanks.
Okay, well, that's excellent, thank you. Um I think we'll call that to a close. If Eddie would like to ask a question? Yeah. Feel free.
I I've been part of many conversations with business community engagement, the big work with Curie Lee on projects. I've got two things to say about the survey. One is the fact that it's come from council, turns turns people off to start with. So if we have a survey that was disconnected with council, was stays of the city or something, people would probably be more likely to respond to that. And the second comment I would make is that the councillor Kendall uh sort of led to with a question about what does community engagement mean? Indeed, the the topics seem, uh seem tied in with council business units, but not necessarily about what the public understands. They understand looking after roads, they don't understand asset maintenance. They're saying, they're looking after the ovals, uh the big open spaces. I think there's a real problem. You change about every word, the public understands.
So if I could, um they they do respond in their own words, um and they will say, I want this, I want this pothole fixed on my road here. And then um to present it in um the service areas, it's just a way of encapsulating it, but they they can provide that feedback, and then that is provided. Yeah.
All right, thank you, good point. Um I think one of the interesting ones, I was with Natasha at a children's event at um uh the Menar Art Centre, and the children were able to plant a plant, and then they were allowed to write their wish, their one wish on um uh like an ice cream stick. And the number of people who wished for more fairies in. Was that, yeah, that would be a magical place, fairies, fairies, fairies. And it's a little fairy-like, isn't it? Uh no, we, I don't think we've got any. Now, just before I let you go, um there's a few things I wanted to go through with you. As we head into the Christmas break, we have a number of events. Tomorrow evening is our final citizenship ceremony for the year. You could see um a good turnout there. This year has seen a record number of people becoming Australian citizens, and we've had to add extra ceremonies to accommodate them, so that's good news. Next Wednesday, eighteenth of December, uh we will join Taswater to launch the beer refiller, not a landfill project at Montrose Four Shaw Park, that'll go into your diaries. Lennox is the first city. Uh, not certain. It should be in your diary if it's not like sure. Lennox is the first city in the state to have one of Taswater's water refillings stations installed. And I believe, do you know here this morning, we're getting five of them or something? Five, this important project promotes healthy hydration while cutting the number of single-use plastic bottles that often end up in our waterways and landfills. So Thursday, the nineteenth, we'll see the opening of a playground at Rose League, it's near Longstone Sperry. And this is the final of the ten playground upgrades jointly funded by the federal government and council. And this afternoon we've had our engagement, so that's it. So I'd like to thank you all for joining us online and in person, this is a very valuable question. Thank you to our elected officials and all offices present. Thank you and good night. You're on the list, Stuart, you're all on the list.
It's in the calendar, Chris.